December meeting of the Muleshue City Council. And if you would stand with me and Councilwoman Parker will lead us in our invitation.
Good Lord, I want to thank you for this day and thank for the moisture that you've given us. Uh, I thank for our city and please give this council guidance and the decisions they have to make. And I want to thank you for all the blessings you've given this town and our council area.
Thank you. Councilwoman Parker will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a quorum present, so we will call this meeting to order. We wanted to welcome our visitors, additional visitors that we have tonight. Thank you for being here. Thank you to Larry Moushi-Dernold, Robert with Channel 6, and our other visitors that are here, we welcome you. At this time, this is a time in the council meeting where we receive any public comments or if there's anyone who would like to make a comment, you're welcome to do so at this time. If we don't have anyone, we'll continue with our agenda. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the council meeting of November 14th.
And how's the minutes?
We have a motion and a second to approve said minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries unanimously. Agenda item number two is to consider ordinance number 0461-1211, disannexing a 3.55 acre tract of land from the city limits of the city of Muleshue. Mr. Brunson.
Thank you. The city's received petition that was due to sign. The required posting in the disannex, proposed disannex area were made. There was a notice posted in the paper as required by the law. Sometime more than 20 years ago, the city annexed a considerable amount of land out north of town. This piece was part of the, the qualified voters that live in this area requested to be disannexed due to the fact that they did not receive water and sewer services to that area.
So they'd never had any water?
Definitely. Not water, not city's supply of water.
And by disannexing then, would there be, they would be part of the city of Muleshue? Would there be a line drawn there or how does that work?
Well, that, that map that I gave you, you'll see the red line on there? That is the current city limits, the red lines. If you'll notice kind of in the middle of that map where there's a blue line drawn in there, that would be the new city limits, should this be disannexed.
And is there a household there?
There's one resident there. And they're basically the one asking for the disannexes. Yes. I'm making a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve said ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And there are none opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
That will be effective as it adopts this ordinance, so it could not be passed until next year.
Okay, thank you.
We will do the proper notification.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to agenda item number three, to consider request from Bailey County for assistance with the Meals on Wheels program. Mr. Brunson?
I think Judge Harrison and Shelby Carpenter, who is the Meals on Wheels director here, I'll just let them make the presentation.
That'd be great, thank you.
I'll just say I'll.
I'm actually just going to give a little bit of history and then I'm going to turn it over to Shelby because there's been some confusion in the public about how Meals on Wheels was formed. In 1984, Meals on Wheels was formed. It's a separate nonprofit corporation. About a year later, they came to the court in July of 85, I believe, and they had found some funding, but a governmental entity had to be the pass-through for that grant. And so Bailey County was the pass-through through all these years. The only thing we really do as a county for Meals on Wheels is we provide the Office of Aging Director, which Shelby is in charge of the Meals on Wheels program, she gets the drivers. The only thing Bailey County is, is a pass-through. We get that money and then turn around and she has a separate checking account that's not anyway attached to the calendar. I'll go over and turn that over to her now because she can kind of tell you what, how this is all came about.
Okay.
The funding, the non-funding.
In November, well, actually, let me begin before that. We get federal funding from SPAG, a $1,200 check, actually $1,300 check, a month paying for a part of Meals on Wheels. Right now, we have over 60 clients, I mean 55 to 60 clients. If we contract with the hospital for them to continue preparing meals and getting the meals from the hospital, they cost $4 a day. As of November 16th, SPAG, actually Dad sent us, sent SPAG some new menus that we were to follow, beginning December 1 of this year. Whenever we got those menus, I brought them up to Roy Anzeldua that prepares our meals at the hospital. And he got with his dietitian to see if there was any way that they could go ahead and complement those meals or switch over to those meals. But it did happen that it would make our costs go way sky-high if we were to do that. So Roy and his dietitian said if we, if they had to use those menus, those new menus from SPAG, that they would not be able to carry meals for us.
May I ask a question before you go a little bit further?
Sure.
Okay, when the menus were changed, you received those menus from SPAG?
Yes, ma'am.
Who did they receive?
DADS.
Okay.
Yes.
Would you explain what DADS is?
It is a, the Department of Aging and Disability Services.
Okay, so that's a federal government entity? The federal money goes to DADS, which is the Texas Department of Aging and Disability Services. DADS gives it to SPAG, which is South Plains Association of Governments, and then we get it from SPAG.
Okay. After they decided that they wouldn't be able to carry meals over, we looked at our options to see what we could do. We tried to go, we had a board meeting with the senior center to see if maybe they would carry our meals for us.
Prepare.
Yes, prepare. After that meeting, the, the meals were still going to cost way too much for us, so we decided we couldn't do that either. As of December 1st, I guess, we have decided to do, to go ahead and still have the Meals on Wheels program, but to fund it only by donations from our clients and the community and try to do it that way by ourselves. What we're requesting from y'all is maybe an add-on to the water bills like the senior center gets, just that $1 donation, they choose to pay that if they want to or they don't have to. That would just give us a little bit extra, a little extra donation to do our, to have our, go ahead and carry on with our program without the federal funding.
The last three months, of average, we paid the hospital about, or Meals on Wheels has paid the hospital, on average, $4,500 a month. And we provide the containers, they're eight or nine cents a day or per, per container. Meals on Wheels provides that. The menus were so stringent, you cannot, there's no canned vegetables, if you get donated a pallet of green beans, you cannot use them because there, there is no canned vegetables. Everything has to be fresh or frozen. If watermelon is on the menu for that day and you don't have fresh watermelon, you cannot serve that menu. You cannot do pineapple for watermelon. There is no substitutions allowed whatsoever.
They actually dictate the menu too.
In order to receive those funds, you have to follow the menus. And we, I've made a lot of fun calls, everything I've received is, most Meals on Wheels programs aren't funded federally. And so they don't apply to most of them. Where we're just looking at trying to get a hot meal to these, you know, people and they don't understand rural communities. I have, I met with Department of Agriculture, we had a, I just ran across him at a meeting, actually the high ground meeting that day, that day it was out. And I found a grant, but it's November 1st deadline, so that will not help us out. We have 14 months, we've got to figure out something to do. We're going to meet with the hospital again and try to see if he starts using the fresh vegetables or frozen. We can take them menus and if they approve them, then we can serve those, but they, we didn't get these menus till the 10th of November and they went into effect December 1st. They've been talking about it for a year. So that's, that was one of the things mentioned as a possibility of maybe getting the dollar donation. That would help out close to $1,500 a month, I believe.
How many city residents receive Meals on Wheels?
They would be the 55, they're all in the, in the city limits.
All of the people you serve to are inside the city limits?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you only accept from the city limits?
If we do, I mean, when we were receiving the funding from SPAG, they had to be citizens of Bailey County. Without that funding, we can, I mean, I had a, a client call that was from Sudan that was in desperate need of a meal or, I mean, this came from the nursing home that he was in really bad shape. But because we were accepting that federal funding, there was nothing that I could do for him.
I've known on a few occasions, well, they're deceased now, but on the Gin Road, there was a couple that we delivered to for a short period of time. And Debbie did that on her own. She, she took those meals every day. It wasn't really on the route and because of the federal funding.
You talked about donations from those receiving the meals. How much, how much did you get from that?
From the 55 clients that we have right now, I have maybe six of them that pay their way.
Fully or partially or?
All, I mean, all the way. Just six of them.
But I'm telling you, with, with the federal funding, you actually could not charge them.
We can't, I cannot go to them and say, look, your meals cost $8 a week, you have to pay. If they choose to, to make a donation to pay for their meals, then that's, that's fine. But we cannot ask them to pay for their meals.
But not even? Without the federal funding, you should repay them?
Yes, now, now you should.
And maybe not the full amount?
Right.
But, but something.
Yes, and that was another thing that we had kind of looked at and thought about is making them also aware of, you know, how much their meal costs a day.
And she has done that. She sent out letters to all the recipients and their family members. And the publicity we've kind of gotten, her donations have picked up. And there's been some people on Meals on Wheels, their family members knew they were on and soon they paid and called and said, you start paying because you, you have that ability to. So we have picked up on our donations in the last month with the public awareness. Do you have a question?
I was just going to say, just maybe a, a dollar a meal would cover, how many meals do you serve a, a month? That would cover?
What was our estimate? I don't agree with that. I mean, well, there was $4 a meal and we serve approximately 55. It goes up and down because it's nice that the hospital does them because when they're in the hospital, they automatically take them off. And it helps, we used to have that problem before. So why, I don't know what your question is.
Well, no, my, my, what I was trying to get at, I was just going to, if you charged them a dollar a meal, and I mean, that's, they're paying 25% of the cost and then I'm sure the city and there's enough people to pick up their, in the city and the county to pick up the rest of it. I don't know if that's possible for these clients or if they're even capable of paying a dollar a meal, but I think that would be a, I'm just throwing out options.
Let me, let me, can I, let me go with something to the history of, of the senior citizen donation and where that came about. And that was in 2003 when the senior citizen received it, settled the old year, trying to figure out how to make it work. And they were getting some of the federal funds, but, but actually these are, the, the funds that Meals on Wheels get is the same funds the senior citizens get. It's not designated for Meals on Wheels program, it's designated to serve seniors nutritious meals. So the, the senior citizen, actually there was one on the city council at that time that, and they approached the city with the same plan, that had a dollar donation to the water bill. And it was approved. There was some discussions and concern at that time, you know, what's the next organization that, that comes to see us? Now we are eight years later, we've got a little surprise it took that long, you know. There, there are a lot of good organizations that may have come and which ones do we say yes and which ones do we say no or do? I think to, to the concern that I have, and I think some of the council members then and maybe now have, if we had another dollar to the bill, and many come in and say, no, I'm not paying two, just take the both off. And then maybe seniors come in, maybe Meals on Wheels gets $800 or senior citizens get 14 or 1500 now. And senior citizens goes to $800, you know. I don't know that that would happen.
Well, first of all, I think it's just a tragedy that, you know, someone who's not really into what's happening with citizens and having a meal, that they start dictating, this is what you're going to eat and you have to do this or you don't get our money. When it doesn't make sense that in the middle of January, you ask for watermelon. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, there is 20, there's 20 fall winter menus and 20 spring and summer menus, but like one of the, and that one is a summer one. But you can do any of them at any time. But like the day that it's hot dog on a bun, you have a baked potato with sour cream and a vegetable, I mean, it's just bizarre, some of the stuff that's on the menu. It just, it does, it forces you to have to do something drastic to do what you have. I also have that concern with, you know, there are, there are many, many groups and organizations. I also know that Muleshue is a very, very giving community. I've seen that firsthand, I've seen that personally. I also know that I think it's important to let an entire community know, this is something that is happening, we do need to gather up and help. My concern with putting it on a water bill is that I know a lot of times people don't look at that. And I don't want them to think we're just sneaking something in there. So I, I do have that concern as far as, as that goes.
I understand that point, but I do think it was y'all put it in the paper when you did that. You made it, you made the citizens aware before and said, if you don't want this, you call.
Right.
And I understand there are many organizations, we're just trying to get a Band-Aid for the next 14 months. It takes that long for us to get some grants again or it takes Meals on Wheels.
Right.
And, am I going to give a little plug? We need board members. We have three vacant spots and we're trying, I mean, that have moved off. We need, and it's not time-consuming. Right now, it may be a little bit more, but usually you meet three or four times a year. It's not time-consuming, but the same people, as you know, serve on all, kind of wear everybody out, the same people out.
I feel too saying that, being specific is saying, you know, we, 14 months is a goal that we need to, as a community, gather together and, and help out with this program. I'm not so sure that the answer is putting it on, on the water bill.
Well, I think too, if, if, if I put it on the water bill, for the senior citizens to spend, it, it's given them a steady month-to-month amount of money to operate their facilities. But if you're talking about a 14-month period, that, that's a little different and maybe there are ways that, that the council can be supportive and promote through Facebook, through web sites, through personal contacts and stuff. You can kind of raise donations for a short period of time, eventually the volunteers run out. I'm sure you've already figured that out. But, but when you're looking at a, at a short period of time, it's still an amount.
Well, and I'm not guaranteed, but I was very hopeful with the, they don't have any stipulations, they just have to be, you know, approved through the health department. They just want warm meals.
Right.
This other grant I'm talking about.
Okay.
And they don't, they don't, and, but like I said, I'm not, the funding for that, the deadline would be November 1st of 12 and then the first money would be February of 13th. So that's where I'm kind of.
Yeah, where you're, with the 13 months.
I'd like to hear.
I think there's a tremendous amount of people, myself included, that would be more than willing to help out with Meals on Wheels. I think it's a tremendous program.
Very much.
You know, I don't know how many people here have had personal experience with, with family members that utilize that type of a program. And it's, it is extremely beneficial. A lot of us don't stop to think how much trouble it is for some people to try to get around to prepare their own meal. And, and they do without, not because they don't have the money to do it or the time to do it, they're just not physically able. And, and this is a very good way out for them to not do without. I think there's plenty of people in this town that probably feel the same way. I think there's plenty of money to be had. I just don't know if this is the right venue to try to collect that money. Right off the top of my head, we don't have near as many civic organizations in Muleshue as we had many years ago. I think this is a, a civic organization's job, really. I, I just don't know if this is the right way to go about doing it. I just don't know who would be willing to step up to do that. Well, one thing, exposure, publicity, and we're getting some great exposure right now.
Absolutely. And that's one thing that we can do is make sure that word gets out, however we can get it out, you know. Help with a fundraiser if we need to. And that's the next step. I think we need to come up with, and the benefit at the Trinity Church last week was great and that brought in, we maybe need to do another fundraiser, because I ring it's an annual.
We made it, I know the Rotary Club collects a dollar from every member, every, every meeting that goes with Meals on Wheels. I think there's, there's some of those avenues, especially when we're looking at, at a 12, 14-month period of time, I think that's going to be easier. I did, I just have concern if we, if we add more to the water bill, we're going to start taking away somewhere else.
I understand that.
But I, but I do believe just getting that word out and making sure everyone, as many people as possible understand the seriousness of it, and, and we do, and helping with that. Because I, and I know that we would help with anything as far as promoting, you know, getting the word out.
And we will, we will have the presiding officer of this meeting to remember at our council meetings to, to keep that in front of the public at every meeting that we have. And there are a lot of people that watch this and especially since.
On channels.
You put it, well, you put it on Ustream now, and there are a lot of them.
There are many, many people, not just here. I mean, it is amazing, it always amazed me how many people really do get on the Facebook page and go to the city and just streaming.
Is it on YouTube?
YouTube, right.
And there, there's a lot of, a lot of yous there, so.
Councilwoman Parker?
I'm also in agreement, but I've also known how important it is and if one of you guys will call me at the office tomorrow, I've got an idea that will help, I promise you that, so.
That would be great. We appreciate your time and as Barry said, the publicity and getting the word out is, helps a lot.
Thank you.
Do we need to? All right, moving on to agenda number four. Consider ordinance number 0460-1211 to tax tangible personal property in transit pursuant to Texas Tax Code Section 11.253. Mr. Brunson?
Yeah, this was on the agenda last month, we, we had discussion, I think there was some questions from the council. Talked to Kayla Elliott, the, the, the questions were about some of the commodities that are stored here and would they be covered under this, this ordinance? And her answer, and what I can tell by looking is, we're pretty well not sure. If, if they would be exempt if we did not pass this ordinance, then there is a good bit of paperwork that they have filed, approved that those commodities stay here less than 175 days and the bays and some of those things. If the council approves this ordinance to tax those goods in transit that are stored here, and then at some point in the future, they decide they do not want to do that, then they can rescind this ordinance. If they do not, if you do not adopt this ordinance at this time, you can't come back in six months and say, oh, I think we ought to, and reinstate the ordinance.
So basically, because of the Senate bill, we had, we have to do one thing or the other.
You can, you can adopt the ordinance now to tax those goods in transit. You can change that at a later date.
But you cannot go the other way.
But you can't go the other way. At any time period or is this like? At any time period. It's forever, forever. This, this was designed for cities to use as an economic development tool to bring a Walmart distribution center to their stuff. And say, we want you here and we're not going to tax those goods that you have, those personal items that you have stored that are not going to save you more than 175 days.
Do we tax already?
Yes. Yes. And one time, we had the opportunity to pass an ordinance to exempt those goods in transit and we did not. Now, it, it's kind of the same deal. Now we have to pass an ordinance to tax them. But it, this was, like I said, this is an economic development tool, especially like in the metroplex where you have this city, 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 city. Walmart wants to be here, Walmart, we want them here. And here's a way that we can do that.
I'll make the motion to accept ordinance number 0460-1211.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of passing this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we will receive a report from the Youth Advisory Council.
Have a good evening. I'm Belinda Pacheco and we have the advisory meeting today. We, after calling the meeting to order, we talked about our fundraiser, which will be on January the 8th, and it will be the brisket lunch. We'll have brisket, baked potato, potato salad, beans, rolls and a cobbler. And the tickets will be $8. Also, we decided that after the lunch, we will also have our second fundraiser, which will be the bingo, a bingo night, whatever you want to call that. We're not sure how much we want to charge on that yet, that's something else we want to talk about. And we also talked about our youth summit. We will be leaving on Friday, the 20th, later in the evening after the basketball game. And also, we will be back on Sunday. And on the actual agenda items, we had a motion and it was carried to approve the ordinance number 0461-1211. And on the request for the Meals on Wheels, we decided to keep that on for later because we didn't really decide what to do either. And we agenda meeting.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Great job. Okay, we'll move on to our administrative reports. Mr. Brunson, back to you.
Just a word on the Youth Advisory Council.
Yes.
They did have a great discussion about the Meals on Wheels program. It's a great, great program, I think they recognize that. They also recognize some of the pitfalls that they dealt with that. Captain Brum, projects, the, talked to the engineer one day this week, last week, and he's got two bidders that are looking at bidding to Westwater Creek Plant. We're real excited about one of the bidders, we don't know the other, but we feel like he's going to be a good bidder also, but we feel good about where that's going. The employees, and I'm always proud of our employees for a lot of things that they do, but they step up this time of year, every year, and collect canned goods for the food pantry. And this year, they collected thirteen hundred and forty-two cans. Ramon and his both work departments collected more than anyone.
Any other department, they were the winner of the.
Have they won this before?
Yes, they have.
How many years?
This second year.
In a big ad of order.
That's right, that's a good.
This would be quite a competition. And I'm really proud that this time of year, these guys step up and make that, you can recognize that that thing is out there.
Great job.
I'm always proud of these guys. The city will be closed, both the office and the department should be off Friday the twenty-third, even though it says the twenty-second, your package is the twenty-third and December the twenty-sixth for the Christmas holidays, so it'll be Friday and Monday. And I want to remind the council that on the sixteenth, next Friday, from two to four, there'll be a reception for Janet Clayburn, who's retiring as the Mulsanne Economic Development Coordinator and Director, Corporation Director. And that'll be at the Bailey County Electric Co-op Building. And the folks that are going to be invited, just come out, say hi to Janet, or Janet.
One or the other.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, great season for our meals.
Yay.
Incredible.
Yay.
Basketball is going already as far as our ladies, meals are going, so, and our boys will join, I guess it'll start Tuesday.
All right, so wonderful job. Councilman McRae, what's your?
On behalf of the council, we do want to wish the entire community a Merry Christmas, a very blessed one, and hope that everyone gets a good break, especially both of us are in school, right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much in this meeting.